Hello, I am Mayor Drew Combs and welcome to the June 24th Regular City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. I'd like to introduce city council members and staff present and chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, city council members Josh Schmidt and Jennifer Wise. City council member Cecilia Taylor is participating remotely under Assembly Bill 2449, Just Cause. City council member Taylor, please provide a description of the circumstances under which AB 2449 apply.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I am requesting remote participation under just cause because I am caring for a family member. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. In accordance with Government Code 54953-B2.A and the City Council Procedures Manual, when one or more city council members participates remotely, agenda items requiring action will be voted on using roll call. This evening, the roll call vote will be taken in alphabetical order, using legal first name with the mayor voting last. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Court Judy Heron. City Court Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. And again, echoing a welcome to our June 24th Regular City Council Meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda. After the mayor calls for comment on that item, if you are in person, we ask that you submit a speaker card, which are available at that back table, to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature, and if you're calling in, you can press *9 at that time. I would also like to make a couple of brief announcements. We are currently accepting applications for the Community Funding Program. That information is available at MenloPark.gov/CFP for Community Funding Program, and that is open through July 18th. We are also recruiting for our Housing Commission through July 31st, and more information is at MenloPark.gov/Commissions. That includes my introductions and announcements. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Heron. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff on any modifications to the agenda order or any requests from city council members. Staff is removing Consent Calendar Item E2: Award a Construction Contract to NAAC Construction LLC and appropriate $204,604 from the General Fund Unassigned Balance for Fiscal Year 24-25 for the High Voltage Streetlight Conversion Project and will return for a future agenda item for this matter. Also, staff will be reordering the regular business items, bringing G2 before G1. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? Yeah, okay. Does the city council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? All right. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful, the city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. City Court Heron, can you please call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card and bring that to me. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature, and if you're calling in, please press *9 now. So we currently have three speakers, and our first speaker will be Robert Hubbell, followed by Dashil Leeds.
Hello, can you hear me okay? My name is Bob Hubbell. First off, thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I want to thank the city council members for their service in making our city a better place to live, so thank you. I've been a Menlo Park resident for 30 years, live at 1231 Woodland Avenue, and have been using the Burgess Pool for about that length of time. I want to speak with you today about the Menlo Aquatics Program, I'm a big supporter of it. I think the pool is run better than any pool that I've ever swum in, and I've swum in a lot in my 65 years. I used to swim in the Rinconada Pool prior to the refurbishment of Burgess, and it was run by the city of Palo Alto, and it was often down for one reason or another. And I would say that Burgess has been great, it's been open and available many, many hours, and the programs are awesome. I think they cover everything from infants to seniors, so cradle to grave, and I don't know if there's another pool that can claim that. And I think if the city's thinking about taking things over and running it itself, we don't have far to look for basically confirmation of our decision, which is Rinconada, the city of Palo Alto decided to use our operator. And I've been over there since and can say that it's run just as nicely as Burgess. I have participated in the workshop that is being held at the Bell Haven Community Center, and I want to say that I think that there's good demand there. I can say that from workshop experience I've had, but also, my wife's been teaching in the Redwood School District for over 10 years, and she started to reach out to some of the administrators there to let them know more about the pool. There seems to be a lot of demand. We want the same for the Bell Haven Pool as we have with Burgess. Burgess is a beacon, and there's a ton of activity. My son wasn't into competitive swimming, but he learned how to swim there, he participated in the camps, he ended up turning into a camp counselor, so for him, it was a great experience. We'd like the same for the Bell Haven community, but it's going to take more of the city's resources to make that happen. It's clear to me from my experience with the workshop and what I've been hearing from my wife, that there's access issues, probably primarily financial, but there's other issues that need to be addressed, and that's something that I think only the city can help step in and fill the gap on. The pools are assets of the city, I believe the operator is an asset of the city, and we don't want to lose them, and it'd be great to see just as many programs there as we've been having at Burgess, and just as many hours of availability. But again, it's going to take effort on the city council and the city's part, and I believe there's been a number of plans that have been kicked around. For one reason or other, they haven't gone forward, I'd like for the city council to reconsider that. You know, we can make it happen, this is a solvable problem, but we need to be committed. I heard that we have a budget surplus. Hey, this would be a great opportunity to apply some of that surplus to help the Bell Haven community. So again, I wanted to thank you for your time and to be able to speak today about a subject that I'm passionate about. It's a health and safety thing, you know, ultimately.
You're over time, just.
Oh, I'm over time? Sorry. Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Dashil Leeds, followed by a call-in user.
Hello, Mayor Combs and Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Dashil Leeds, I'm the Conservation Coordinator with the Sierra Club Lumber Prieta Chapter. We sent in a letter this afternoon regarding Item E2. I understand that that's been pulled from the agenda, so I'll make my comments here at this portion. This is a really great opportunity, as the city's considering to replace streetlights to install Dark Sky compliant lighting fixtures. We've sent over some resources that can help the city along with that. We've sent along the five principles for responsible outdoor lighting, that is ensuring that lighting's useful, targeted, low-level, controlled, and warm-colored. So basically, what this looks like is shielded lighting fixtures that are directing light to where the intended use is, using a warmer-colored bulb rather than bluer light. There's actually a lot of scientific evidence showing that blue light is not only more harmful for humans, but also for wildlife, in terms of triggering negative health effects that come from disrupting the circadian rhythm. We've also attached a model lighting ordinance for street lighting, developed by Dark Sky International and the Illuminating Engineering Society. And we've also attached a list of Dark Sky International's approved products, and there's plenty of Dark Sky compliant, street lighting, roadway lighting, parking lot lighting, and other kinds of lighting fixtures on there. So again, we think this is a good opportunity, if you're going to be replacing some lights to go with the Dark Sky compliant route, and just do a little small part to reduce the cumulative impacts of light pollution on nature and on residents. Thanks for your time and consideration.
And our next speaker will be a call-in user, and if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Galaxy, and I am a resident of Menlo Park. Two weeks ago, I addressed this council in public comment about our aquatics program and spoke in favor of the city working cooperatively with Menlo Swimsport, our aquatics operator, towards a sustainable model of operations at Burgess Pool and Bell Haven Pool, in light of significantly lower attendance than projected at Bell Haven Pool since its reopening in May 2024. Today, I would like to share some additional reflections related to this topic. First, I recently received a flyer in the mail advertising the city's summer programs, including its aquatics programs at both pools. This flyer is translated into English and Spanish, lists the hours at both pools, mentions that scholarships are available for youth swim lessons and teams, and includes a coupon for Bell Haven Pool. I am grateful that the city sent this flyer out, and I certainly hope that it helps to encourage aquatics participation in our community this summer and beyond. Second, I would like to continue to encourage some creative and flexible thinking around what a sustainable model of operations would look like for our city aquatics program. Here in Menlo Park, we have one pool, Burgess Pool, close to the center of our city in District 3, and one pool, Bell Haven Pool, in the eastern part of our city in District 1. We do not have a pool in the western part of our city, and I'm not suggesting that we need one, but I do want to point out that for residents in Districts 4 and 5, in the western part of our city, the pool at Burgess, near the center, is the closest pool. As for the residents in District 2, who live between District 1 and District 3, according to my very approximate calculations, about half of these residents are closer to Bell Haven Pool, and about half are closer to Burgess Pool. This means that Burgess Pool is the closest pool for three of our city council districts, and about half of another, and Bell Haven Pool is the closest pool for one of our city council districts and about half of another. Now, it's very important that we have both pools open, but at the same point in time, I think looking at a sustainable model, it's really going to require some creative thinking. Given that pools typically are funded by the people who come to swim, and given that there are significantly few residents closer to Bell Haven, it seems to me that having lower attendance at Bell Haven compared to Burgess would not be entirely unexpected. And so how can we get things to be sustainable? It's hugely important, but it's going to require some creative thinking. I also want to point out that regardless of how many swimmers attend the pool, lifeguards must be and are provided. I am grateful to the excellent safety track record of Menlo Swimsport. In 2024, there was one non-morbidity drowning incident at Bell Haven, which means that a swimmer started to drown, but the incident was interrupted in time, and there was no injury or death. Really, having trained staff, who of course have to be paid, is hugely important for a swimming pool. I'm so grateful for what we have in this community, and I want to make sure that we can continue to enjoy these pools, both of these pools, in a sustainable way, and I continue to encourage all of us to put on our thinking caps for how we can help make that happen. Thank you.
All right, and our next speaker will be Kim Friedas.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for this time on the issue of the Burgess Park and Bell Haven Pools. I'm a 28-year user of Burgess Park Pool, and I'd like to urge all of you to help find a sustainable and viable model for continuing operations and to right-size the operations at Bell Haven and consider the subsidy, which would allow the pool at Bell Haven to pay the lifeguards so that summer programming can continue at the level that you feel is appropriate for the equity goals of the city. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further hands or cards on this item. Hama? Perfect, come right on up.
Hi, my name is Hannah Alix Gallagher. I'm a resident of Menlo Park, and I want to thank you all for your time this evening and your service to my city. I wanted to talk today about the budget issue that is connected to the pools at Menlo Park and in Burgess Park and at Bell Haven, and talk a bit about what it takes to get a strong swim program going. And the city has invested in a wonderful facility. I actually came there directly, came here directly from Bell Haven. I can tell you, the parking lot is full, people are there, this is an after-school time on a lovely, warm day, and people are coming in for swim lessons, they're coming for lap swim, they're coming to play. But it takes a long time to get a steady user base and to fill Aquafit classes and find the programming that is going to best engage a community, and that pool hasn't yet had that time. We've had that time at Burgess Park, the pool has been around for a long time, and we can see a track record with Menlo Swimsport of wide array of diverse programming. And I've written all of you a personal letter, so you have an understanding of how deeply and positively the range of programming has affected my family. We have used not Aquafit, but I think essentially everything else at various points in time, and building that strong commitment, such that when I want to go swim, or when I want my kids to learn to swim, or when I want to play water polo, Menlo Park is the place I go, took time. It didn't happen overnight. And what I want to talk about in terms of budget is giving the pool at Bell Haven time, helping it, you've made a beautiful investment in a facility, and that does not mean people will show up overnight. Creating a situation where the financial impact on a really high-quality operator is unsustainable will not help that community in the long term. I've been engaged with Burgess Park long enough to remember the bids that came the last time you bid them, and there was one bid that offered minimal, minimal programming, and another bid from someone who had never actually run a facility. And I think perhaps it is easy to underestimate the complexity of keeping two to three different pools, and both facilities have three pools open and running, running different programming, hiring all of the lifeguard, the high-quality staff, and building the long-term commitment that brings people back over and over. And I urge you to not walk away from the investment in a facility by walking away from making sure that it is run by someone who has an extensive track record of the best programming around. So thank you.
Now seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Clerk Heron. With that, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. Under Consent Calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items, and I'm very, thank you everyone who provided public comment, we really appreciate your feedback. The city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. As a reminder, staff has removed Item E2, and that item will return at a future council meeting. City Court Heron, can you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, E1, City Council Meeting Minutes, E2, an amendment to the HVAC Agreement, I'm sorry, E3, an amendment to the HVAC Agreement, or E4, an amendment to the Water Supply Agreement. If you are in person, you can complete a speaker card and return that to me. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature, and if you're calling in, please press *9 This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, E1, E3, and And so our first speaker will be Steve Marbury, followed by Brian Schmidt.
I'm Steve Maroney, I'm a 40-year-plus city resident in District 5, and I had an issue with E4, which is the water contract that the city of Menlo Park has with SFPUC. I have an issue with how SFPUC is charging us as far as capital improvements, that I feel that SFPUC probably is not telling the whole picture about what their infrastructure costs are, particularly on what we call design drought. We always want to make sure that we have enough water, particularly in the issue of drought, but SFPUC uses data that they don't particularly want to share with us as far as how much water is needed and how much storage. So there are significant infrastructure costs that SFPUC is passing along to all the members. It's not just the city of Menlo Park, it's 1.8 million people in the Bay Area rely on SFPUC for their water, and unfortunately, we're captive to SFPUC. I know Councilmember Nash is on our Bay Area Water Quality at the Basque, and I would like to urge as much pressure on SFPUC to give us better data as far as truly what the design drought and how much water we actually need, because we're being charged for that excess water that SFPUC wants to quote-unquote "store" or at least have possible for distribution. So, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Brian Schmidt, and Brian, if you can let us know which agenda item you are speaking on.
Good evening, Brian Schmidt with Menlo Spark, speaking to Item E3, the HVAC Amendment. Just wanted to submit a comment that the staff report discusses occasionally extensive or significant repair costs incurred in the maintenance, as well as the repairs that are addition to regular maintenance. And I wanted to suggest that some of those repairs might present an opportunity to electrify building operations above and beyond what is already in planning. In particular, if there are extensive boiler repairs, those might be an opportunity to replace a boiler with a heat pump, and similarly, if there are extensive air conditioning repairs that are needed, that that might be an opportunity to replace a one-way air conditioning system with a two-way air conditioning heat pump system. So, and the staff report also notes that there are unplanned additional repairs that sometimes occur. Not sure how to necessarily operationalize this, but maybe the staff in charge of the maintenance and repairs could be in consultation with Sustainability Department as part of helping achieve the city's goal to be carbon neutral in city operations by 2030. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further hands or cards for the consent calendar. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Heron. Bringing it back to the dais for any comments or a motion, I will say I appreciate the public comment, and I think you used the word, we're a bit of a captive audience to the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, I think that's accurate, and that's someone who served on Basque before the Vice Mayor, although she certainly has more recent and more extensive experience, but nonetheless, I think that the feedback is very much appreciated because there is a forum to provide that.
And I want to assure residents that we are actively talking about the costs and also the design drought and trying to get some sort of discussion at Basque or another venue about the design drought and the Tuolumne River Trust, the releases into the Tuolumne River, and that's an ongoing conversation. And then regarding the comment about the electrification of city utilities, that is a very active topic, that we have a fabulous sustainability department in Public Works that are very, very closely aligned and regularly talking about any opportunities that we have. And with that, I would like to move the consent item for approval.
Oh. Yeah, and then a second, right?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. So just to add to Vice Mayor Nash's comment, in the staff report, it also seems that the electrification is also in our five-year capital improvement plan for the Bell Haven Child Development Center and the Ariagla Family Recreation Center. So thank you so much for that comment, it's something I know we're always thinking about, and with that, I would like to second the motion.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash, and a second by City Councilmember Wise to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item E2. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
And Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Heron. With that, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The public hearing tonight is considering and adopt a resolution overruling protest ordering the improvements, confirming the diagram area of assessment, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments for landscaping assessment district for fiscal year 2025-26. Here to introduce the item is Management Analyst 2 Joanna Chen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmember. I'm Joanna Chen, the Management Analyst 2 for Public Works. Here with me, I do have the Assistant Public Works Director Brian Henry, as well as the Internal Service Manager Erin Romero. I'll be presenting tonight the proposed landscaping assessments for fiscal year 2025-26. Here are some background information about the district. In 1982, the voters approved Measure N to form the Landscaping Assessment District. A year later, the city established the district to provide proper street tree maintenance. 1990, the city added an assessment for the repair and maintenance of sidewalk, curb, gutter, and parking strips damaged by city tree roots. Lastly, in 1998, the voters approved a ballot measure to increase the district fees. Oops. Okay. So the district partially funds these three city-provided services. The first one being the city tree maintenance. The city has a contractor that helps maintain these street trees on a rotating five-year schedule. Residents may submit requests through the ACT Menlo Park app outside of that five-year cycle. The second service is the street sweeping service. The service is to reduce the amount of fallen tree debris entering into the city's storm drain system. The last service is the sidewalk, curb, gutter, and parking strip repair and replacement program. So as the street trees mature, their root system become very extensive, the roots will eventually break through and uplift the sidewalks. So the district rate and the general fund will help cover the cost of the sidewalk repair and replacement program. For fiscal year 25-26, the proposed tree assessment rate would increase by $2.82, which is a 3% increase, and the assessment for the 3% increase, and the assessment for the sidewalk repair program would increase by $7.54, $7.54, which is a 15% increase per single-family equivalent. So the amount increase accounts for a couple of reasons. The additional tree care services to address pests and diseases, the increase in agreement costs for all three services, and then to address the annual sidewalk replacement needs and the current backlog. This item before you is an annual action required by the city to continue the collection of the assessments. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Any clarifying questions from council before we open the public hearing? I actually have one question. How were these activities funded before 1982? And it's, it's okay if you don't know. It's obviously, I'm the mayor, I don't know. But I was just wondering, I, I get lots of feedback on how Menlo Park funds things, or things that it doesn't fund, that is different from other communities and cities. And so I have that recent person in my ear. And so I was just wondering, as this came up, how, how, how is this funded? How was historically this is funded, and possibly how it's funded in other cities? And we can follow up if, oh, I'm sorry, the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it would be better to follow up later. I do recall with some of these previous staff reports that there was some explanation of that. So I think we can, we can tap that information. But I think generally, as it relates to how it was funded, would have been through the city's general fund. And as a refresher for people with overall history, I think this occurred in 1982, is that what the slide said? Yeah, so I think Major Milestone, 1978, the adoption of the passing of Proposition 13 in California dramatically changed property tax revenues for cities. So I have a feeling that that was a major inspiration for this change.
You say dramatically changed, some might say dramatically reduced collections from property taxes going forward. Okay, thanks. I think, and, and, yeah, that, that actually makes sense. I don't think there's any need to follow up. Thanks. So with that, I will open the public hearing. And City Court Karen, can you call for public comment?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our public hearing item F1 related to the landscaping assessment district for fiscal year 2025-26, if you are in person, you can submit a speaker card. If you are virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item F1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Court Karen. I will close the public hearing and open it up for a city council discussion, our, our motion. No questions?
I, not to short-circuit the conversation, but, yeah, I don't have a ton of comments. This is pretty cut and dry to me, so I'd actually be happy to make a motion unless there's other questions.
We have a motion from Councilmember Schmidt. Do we have a second?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Schmidt, and a second by City Councilmember Wise to adopt a resolution overruling protests ordering the improvements, conferring the diagram area of assessment, and ordering the levy and collection of assessments. Any further city council questions or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
City Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
City Councilmember Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Court Karen. Now we'll move on to regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require a city council approval. Again, staff is reordering the agenda, bringing item G2 before G1. So we'll move on to G2 as our first regular business item, which is consider and adopt resolutions for fiscal year 2025-26, adopting budget and capital improvement plan, establishing appropriations limit, amending salary schedule effective July 13, 2025, extending rate assistance program through June 2026, and accept award authority and bid requirements through June 2026. Here to introduce the item is Finance and Budget Manager, Jared Hanson. Thank you and welcome, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to go over the fiscal year 2526 budget adoption. The agenda for tonight in the presentation is going to be to talk a little bit about the city council priorities, give you a summary of the budget changes that have happened since the public hearing that we had on June 10th, provide an updated five-year forecast for the general fund, go over the resolutions and actions that we're asking tonight, and get final city council direction and adoption of the budget. So just to remind council on the priorities, on March 22nd, the city council held an annual priority setting workshop. In this workshop, they identified five different priorities, including the new downtown vibrancy priority. We provided more details on this in our May 29th budget workshop, as well as on the June 10th public hearing. And the proposed budget was developed with these priorities in mind, and is supported with the items in the operating and capital budgets. As we look to the proposed 2526 budget, I want to go over the changes that we've had since the June 10th public hearing. The first change that we've had is we've refined the personnel costs. This has adjusted our vacancy and turnover factor to 14% to more closely align with current trends, and has increased the medical premiums to account for some revised projections for the second half of the year. The fiscal 2425 year-end projection and general fund five-year forecast also includes the city council direction for a one-time transfer of $3 million from the general fund to the CIP fund. The next change is kind of some breaking news. As a reminder, the state has, this is related to the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees and the current shortfall and reimbursement for fiscal year 2324. This was included in the state's budget today, June 24th, but this was at a reduced amount. As a reminder, the state has always reimbursed the county and the cities for the full amount of our VLF shortfall in the budget. We assume that this would be the same as in prior years, and we've included the full amount of our VLF shortfall reimbursement in the budget. We just heard today that for the first time, the state did not include that full amount of shortfall in its budget. The net effect of this is expected to reduce the amount of general fund revenues that we receive from property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee or VLF of approximately $1 million. Based on this, we will be making an adjustment to the VLF revenues during our major budget amendment. Council can authorize use of unassigned fund balance to help cover the shortfall. We will continue to be, to work with our partners across the county regarding future VLF payments, providing advocacy and a sustainable funding source for the VLF revenues in the future. And finally, we will update the five-year forecast to account for that latest information. As such, the information that's presented for you tonight does not have that VLF shortfall, the reduction in the VLF shortfall in the projections. Just keep that in mind as we go, go through everything. So we look to the fiscal year 2526 budget. We have over 55 funds. Our proposed budget is $216.1 million. The general fund comprises $79.4 million of that, and the remainder of the funds for operating expenses is about $50.1 million. Our capital improvement plan has $19.5 million in new funding requests, $60.4 million in estimated carryover funding, and there's an additional $6.7 million in estimated carryover for the housing funds that have been authorized by council so far. A reminder that the fund balances in the attachments to the staff report, they consist of previously committed and unassigned fund balances as our total balance, but do not include any estimated carryover expenditures from the prior year. As such, those numbers are a little bit artificially inflated. The proposed fiscal year 2526 budget for the general fund, I had mentioned before, is $79.4 million in expenditures and $78.6 million in revenues, which results in a slight deficit of .8 million. This deficit, based on the information on the reduced VLF, will grow to approximately $1.75 million when we take that into account. Just a little more information on the capital improvement plan. Our proposed 2526 budget includes the direction that we received from council at the May 13th study session. We've incorporated that $4.9 million transfer from the general fund to the general CIP fund, allocated $1.6 million from the Bayfront Mitigation Fund to the Safer Bay Project, and we've allocated .25 million from the Environmental Justice Implantation Fund to help pay for the urban forest management plan. As we look to the operating reserves, our strategic pension reserve will fall to .13 million. Our emergency contingency reserve will remain at the policy minimum of 15% of operating expenses and funded at $11.9 million. Economic stabilization will remain at the minimum of 20%, 15.9 million. Included in the budget are a few service level enhancements intended to restore or improve services provided to the community. The current budget includes an addition of three FTEs, full-time equivalents, for two parking office enforcement officers and one police record specialist, as well as two mobile closed-circuit television cameras, partially supported by the Bayfront Mitigation Fund. And these are included in the operating budget. Taking this all into account, now what does our five-year forecast look like? Just a reminder, the general fund five-year forecast does now include the $3 million transfer that council has authorized from the general fund to the general CIP fund. It does not include any amounts from this VLF shortfall reimbursement, and as such, the, excuse me, the projected fund balance would decrease from $36.5 million to $15.1 million over the five-year period. Our strategic pension reserve funding would be depleted in fiscal year 2627. Emergency contingency reserve will no longer be fully funded beginning in fiscal year 2728, and the economic stabilization no longer will be funded, fully funded, beginning in fiscal 2930. And I have a few charts to go over. So the first one is our operating surplus deficit. And as you can see, our annual, our annual budget deficit is projected to grow each year of the five-year forecast. Our unassigned fund balance is declining mainly due to funding other reserve buckets rather than an overall decrease. But as those expenditures increase, our reserves have to increase, and the reserve policy will be something that we'll be talking about in the next staff report item. The next item that you see is the strategic pension reserve funding. As you can see, we have enough for the 2425 and 2526 budget, and in 2627, we exhaust that. The emergency contingency reserve is maintained at the minimum policy of 15% of budgeted expenditures until fiscal year 2728, and then is fully exhausted in fiscal year 2930. Our economic stabilization, this is maintained through the forecast at our 20% minimum of adopted expenditures through fiscal year 2930. Next up, we have the five resolutions that are before you tonight that we are seeking guidance on. The first one is adopting the fiscal year 2526 budget and capital improvement plan. This formally appropriates the funds and expenditures during the year and authorizes payment up to the budget amounts for certain items. The second resolution is establishing the appropriation limit for 2526. This is based on an annual change in population as well as cost of living. This is commonly referred to as the GAN limit. The third resolution is related to our salary schedule amendments. This updates the salary schedules effective the first pay period following July 1st pursuant to the memoranda of understanding with each of the unions. The next resolution is extending the rate assistance program for solid waste and water utilities through June 30th, 2026, to help low-income households cover basic living expenses. And finally, the last resolution is the award authority. This establishes our spending and bid requirements, as well as provides updates to the Public Works bid thresholds based on an inflationary factor. At this time, staff is seeking final direction on the proposed fiscal year 2526 budget and on the, and recommending to adopt the resolutions as outlined. And that concludes my presentation, and I will turn that back to you, Mayor Combs.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for the presentation. We'll bring it to the dais to see if there are any clarifying questions. If not, I'll ask the, yes, yeah, Councilmember Schmidt?
Just two really quick ones. One was the, the staffing, the slide with the staffing budget where it had a few of the PD headcounts in there. But I'm curious about the staffing, the staffing budgeted amount, the total dollar versus the potential fulfilled roles, because I know often when one role's gone unfilled, that, that creates a bit of a buffer. So how's that factored in? I'm just curious, those weren't the only headcount that were included, unfilled headcount included in the budget, or were they?
The FTEs that you saw in the presentation were actually new position requests. So these are not positions that are currently at the city. So we're requesting those three additional FTEs so we can fill those positions. The remaining FTEs for the city, across the city, those that are not funded, we use the vacancy and turnover factor. That has been increased from 13% to 14% in the proposed budget. And so you'll see a line on the general fund summary on this attachment each that says vacancy and turnover factor, which reduces the total personnel costs appropriately for that amount.
So, so would that happen, does that happen on a rolling kind of month-by-month basis? Or I, I'm just curious, how the, how does that get accounted for as the budgets become
That's a placeholder mostly just to reduce the overall budget, since we don't specifically identify- since we don't specifically identify each individual positions that are that are vacant. And because of the different turnover that happens during the year, we will don't know which specific departments that it's going to apply to. So we we budget this one kind of lump sum number in a nondepartmental area so that it covers all of those vacancies throughout the entire year.
Okay, perfect. And then just a tiny question, the UIL fifteen to twenty year discussion, that's the next. I want to make sure I get it straight in my brain. So that's the discussion that was going to come first, but now is going to come second. Okay, thanks.
Any additional clarifying questions? All right, Court Karen, you can call for public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on regular business item G two related to fiscal year twenty twenty five twenty six budget, if you are in person, you can complete a speaker card and return that to me. If you are participating virtually, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G two. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Court Karen. Bringing it back to the dais for any more substantive questions or comments. And obviously ultimately a motion in a second.
Thank you so much for the presentation and the ever changing numbers. And I guess I will just make the comment that we're probably all feeling that it's a little sobering that we have flipped from a surplus to a deficit and now a deeper deficit with the VLF.
That is something that has changed since the last time we met on this topic. Oh, Councilmember Taylor, oh, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Councilmember Taylor, please go.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And I would like to revisit the funding for the urban forestry management plan on slide nine. In the effort of planting and not planning and just really looking at the EJ element, I want to ensure with support of the council that the contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the environmental justice funds to the CIP, which is included in the budget, goes towards implementation of tree planting instead of developing the urban forest management plan, since there is already funding available in the CIP for the plan itself.
Does staff have a response to that? So I'm just making sure I understand instead of the quarter of a million allocation from the EGI for the management plan, that that should go directly towards planting trees? And that other funds are available to to cover the plan cost.
I'm happy to cover this one.
Oh, yeah.
So there would be two hundred and fifty thousand in carryover funds from the CIP project for the urban forest master plan. That funding could still be applied to the development of the plan. The addition of the EJ funds, as Councilmember Taylor is requesting, would be for tree planting work itself instead of plan development. So if the council directed that tonight, then we would just ensure that that two hundred and fifty thousand contribution would would really just be used for tree planting. Staff will come back at a later time to present that project to you and appropriate, you know, the the amount that is needed, actually needed for the tree planting program. But that early action tree planting program was first discussed at the city council workshop. And the city council generally directed, you know, staff to pursue that and and use EJ funds for it at that time. So it would be focused only on Bellhaven as well.
I still don't know if I completely understand, but if you and Councilmember Taylor understand, then that's fine with me.
And the other part is that staff can make the two hundred and fifty thousand that's already in the CIP for the urban forest management plan. We can likely make that work by adjusting the scope or, you know, taking a look at what we're including in the RFP, which has not gone out yet for that project.
So but that would have to be just, could you repeat it? So we make sure, Councilmember Taylor, so we make sure that Clark Heron records, because this is an additional item. And so I just want to make sure we have the verbiage exactly as as you're suggesting it. So Councilmember, that would just be like repeating exactly how you unless the clerk doesn't need it. If you feel you understand, like when we come to the point of of having that additional item, if you understand it, Clark Heron, then we don't, we don't need Councilmember Taylor to repeat it.
Again, from what I gather, this would be a direction that we're taking opposed to amending the motion. So if I believe staff has received the direction, so.
Okay, so is this direction not, nothing that has to be incorporated into a motion?
Yeah, as long as we have majority support for the council.
All right, thank you for the clarification. I'm I'm supportive. I'll let other council members, I see not even so bad. So I think we have a majority support of that direction. So thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I had a couple of, a couple of things and I, I guess, I think this is the right place to bring it up because we're trying to pin down the specifics. So I had a chance to think about the last session we were in and and then some folks who've been talking to me over the last couple of weeks about the pool. And so I had a twofold thought about that. I don't feel great that we still feel that that's unfunded. Through the summer, to some degree, there's been a request by the operator to put some additional funds in to help support the summer, not necessarily to make them whole, but just to help them bridge the cost with a particular amount of money. And I think maybe city staff could could remind me what that is. And I would recommend we revisit that as a bridge through the summer. And then this isn't specifically a budget request, but I'm not sure where to bring it up, so I'll just throw it out there. Is, I think I'm coming to the distinct realization that Burgess is in District Three. So a lot of folks are waking me up to that fact and coming to me about that. And I'd be more than happy to work on a subcommittee with Councilwoman Taylor, because the pools are in both our districts, to look at a post summer, I don't know what to call it, kind of a, an operating plan to make sure things are really sustainable and equitable. And the reason I bring this up in a little more kind of stream of consciousness way is I feel like there's a lot of things flying from the dice and all around and different conversations, and it's just hard to keep it all straight, right? So the offer is I'd be willing to be on a subcommittee with her if that's amenable to the group. We bridge the program through the summer to give us some time to make sure this doesn't all fall apart. And then we come up with a kind of post summer kind of plan that is a little more structured than what it feels like it's been for me. So I wanted to kind of throw that out there. I know that was a a group of everything all together, but but I feel like things are kind of flying in every direction and we're kind of at risk of things going really sideways with the pool. So that was my, that was my big comment. And then a secondary comment, and I know this is going to be shaded now by the VLF, is I think the vice mayor made a really good comment of it being able to have a list of projects and priorities. So we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul from different funds. I know we had some disagreements about we should pull from here and go from there. But I went back and rewatched the video, so I would make a second request related to budget, which is I'd love to see what those priorities are. I'd love to see what the funds are and then have a more detailed discussion about how we can do that in a little bit more organized way. I think that was a really good discussion. So, or a good suggestion. So anyway, that was, those were a couple of comments about what I've been thinking about with this.
Yeah.
Could you explain a little bit more about your second comment? I'm not quite sure I understood it.
Oh, the the list? I think, I think we were discussing last time and I was trying to suggest a poll from downtown amenities and different things. And I think you made a comment, I wrote it in my notes somewhere, you said, well, what we really need is a list of priorities matched with available funds as opposed to trying to do it on the fly here on the dais. So it would be really helpful to to be able to have a more structured discussion about what are some of the things that we could fund? And where could we potentially fund them as opposed to, you know, doing it the other way? So I was, I was just playing off of an idea that I think you had. Does that help?
I think in in response to that, my, it seems like a lot of that is is just a discussion around the CIP. Is it not? No, certainly with downtown, there is a downtown amenities funds, that's a unique scenario. And so certainly when it comes to downtown, that comes into play. But again, and I don't want to speak conclusively, but I think that's again more exception than rule that that like there are other funding sources. So in a lot of cases, we're just looking at this in the context of the CIP. And as you prioritize that, that is, that is your priority.
Yeah, I agree. I think it came up in the, I think the last time we were actually trying to figure out how to allocate CIP. And I think the vice mayor had a good suggestion of like, let's just look at that somewhat separately and in a more structured way than we did it last time. So.
Yeah, Councilmember Wise.
So just, I really like also the idea of the list of priorities, but I think the pool might have to be one of the things on the list, only because, as we discussed earlier, like the surplus is gone. And we're now looking at a deficit. So I just don't know now like where the money would come from. But then also in regards to your subcommittee offer, I totally understand that because the pool is in your district. I do, I think this is a place we need staff input only because Councilmember Taylor and I are currently on that subcommittee together and we have spoken about it. So not sure how that would work with the Brown Act. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Is that a, sorry, and to be clear, this is where, this is sort of a new topic to me, so I was making more of a friendly offer. It wasn't meant to replace any subcommittee you already have. I thought that was for the Bellhaven only pool though, or is it for both?
We have been talking about both. I don't know that.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. Then maybe a suggestion, it would just be helpful to see what the sort of post summer a very structured plan for the next six months, the next year, whatever it is. Because I feel like there's lots of ideas coming from every corner of the universe and that's just a hard way to kind of manage whether this is going in the right direction or not. So I'm happy to not be on a subcommittee as long as there's a, there's a structured kind of list of like, here's the fifteen things that are going to happen from now until probably when we're off council. That that's what I was sort of wishing for.
A question that I should know the answer to, so I know that we're no longer in surplus. But is that still based on moving the three million dollars to the CIP? Or did that not happen? Or that's not planning on happening?
The movement of the three million is actually in the current fiscal year. It's not in next fiscal year's proposed budget. The next staff item, the G one that we have, will talk a little bit more about that and go into more detail on some things for that.
Okay, totally fair. Yeah, I mean, when when you suggested the subcommittee, I was, I was sort of like, I thought we had this subcommittee. But again, I don't always know what's up. I think, and again, we can have this discussion like at some point and see where folks land. But I actually think as it relates to the pool going forward, a subcommittee approach is not the best. Because it's become such a contentious and highly visible issue. I think it's, it's important that going forward, we all have the discussion as as a council. Again, it can be, that can result in something that's a little shambolic at times, because as you said, like everyone's coming back at. But then I think that that speaks to the accountability we should all have, given that I think there's a general consensus around the the community that it's, you know, reached a certain level of criticality in the relationship and what the future looks like. And so I wouldn't want a scenario where in that that situation, given that background and foundation, we would sort of send two folks off. And again, and no, at all just to Councilmember Taylor, Councilmember Wise, but we have a committee and it has not been a panacea to the tension that has arisen in that, that engagement. And so that would just be my perspective. Again, if the council decided to like further empower the subcommittee that exists to act in the way that you suggested, then then certainly we can go that that way. But but that's just my, you know, my experience is that that with these sort of, if it's like a sort of development agreement or something, you can send two council members off and they can. But when it's something that has reached a certain level of visibility and intention, that it usually isn't productive to to send two council members off to formulate something that, again, the three other council members will have a very a very informed opinion of. And so irrespective of what those two council members did in their subcommittee. But again, that's just my my thought. Now, I wanted to understand, like, as far as this bridge program and this idea of providing some funding as it relates to the swimming operations, the operator put forward, I think it's like two or three suggestions as it relates to funding. I don't know that that's been vetted by staff at all, because the staff have a POV on that. And I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I don't. I know staff has not been given direction by the city council to go and form a POV on that, which would probably be an important thing before they did that.
Correct. Mayor, I can just confirm that it, we would be looking for the council direction to 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 analyze those options. We have not reviewed them. We can point to the email that came in, I believe, on June ninth from Carol Hayworth. So that that's, that would be the reference point for anybody this evening, looking to see what those options were. But we have not formulated an opinion on those yet.
And so to Councilmember Schmidt suggesting about like, again, you know, some sort of bridge program or from your perspective, and please correct me if I'm wrong, would something like that start with staff gaining direction to explore the the options that were put forward by the the operator CFO? Or would the direction or take a different form?
In terms of conceptually, that I would expect that the direction would be coming from the city council to explore, like, as you said. But we would look for that council direction. I'd need to look to the city attorney about in what form we would potentially get that direction. But yes, that's what I would be expecting is unless there's a majority council direction to explore that, staff would not be spending time on that.
Okay. So so I would turn to Councilmember Schmidt. And at some point, I guess, you, that's how you should frame it to your colleagues to see if they're, they're, I don't want to. It's your, your, your idea. I want you to be on point and answer any questions from, from, from the council about that. But but again, so that's, I think, how we would move forward with with that suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I would say that my impression is that given some, some numbers that I saw from the operator, it's quickly becoming financially, not not taking in aggregate, but they might have made or lost over a period of time. I think toward the end of the summer, it's pretty financially critical for them. And so, so I think I'm a little worried about where we're moving in such a way that, you know, over here to the left is the iceberg and over here to the right is the Titanic. And we keep kind of ticking along and we're not changing course. So I'm, I So I'm, I, I think this was one way to give us a little bit more time. So whatever that number is to make sure that they can still operate at, um, both pools. And, and then the, the, if we don't do the, um, the, the, some kind of a modified subcommittee, or we, we re-task the subcommittee to do something different, totally fine with that. But it's all just to preserve, it's all to preserve, um, this idea that we're going to, uh, sustain the pool and, uh, make it more equitable, but buy ourselves as much time as possible. So I, I, I think whatever that number ends up being is designed to, you know, just buy us more time and hopefully help us avoid hitting this, this iceberg. Cause that's the impression I'm getting of, of where we're headed with all this, so.
I'm going to acknowledge the vice mayor, but really quickly into what, um, to either the city manager, city attorney, would you be looking for a general consensus for direction? Are we, we have to actually like add this to some sort of actual action as it relates to the pool and going forward? It is budget related.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for the, um, opportunity to clarify. I, I think for this evening, as you said, it, it's budget related. If there are three council members that are interested in, in the, um, staff pursuing that, that could be covered through this agenda item. It, it would not need to come back, but if there's not three council members in support of pursuing it, then we would not pursue it.
Yeah, I get you. Three, three, I hear you. I hear you.
So I do not support this at this time. We have given clear direction to the operator that, um, there is an opportunity to raise non-resident fees. We have seen nothing since we gave that direction about that opportunity. What we are seeing is, well, the whole, um, the entire agreement is based upon revenue sharing. It intentionally did not go into, um, expenses and the profits. It's strictly based on the revenue coming in. We do not really, we do not have information about that. I too have had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Sheper and, uh, Ms. Hayworth and have seen some numbers. But they are very gross numbers. And, um, what I would like to see is first of all, how could that be done? How could, um, a viable plan be put together with, um, raising non-resident fees? I would also like to see, um, I do not, we've been talking about this again and again, and also prior to, um, many years, for many years. And we need to get a complete picture. We need to figure out how do we stop the, you know, what is going on? How do we, how do we make this work, um, so that we are not constantly just putting Band-Aids on and, um, limping along? I think we all do want it very much to work. I think we want to work with, um, MSS and try to make that work. But it's, um, I feel like, um, we have given a path and it has not been taken yet. With, um, how would, how much would you need to raise non-resident fees to make this work? There's also the fact that the city does already contribute 1.1, between 1.1 and 1.5, I believe, million dollars, um, to the pools, in the way of, um, all of the infrastructure that's, um, that, the pools themselves. Um, and we, the partnership is based on the city providing the pools and the facility and the, um, operator providing the, um, operate, the programming and the lifeguards. So I think that something that, um, I feel is continually lost is the fact that the city is already contributing quite a bit. And that this was part of an RFP that went forward on revenue share. Um, the original RFP was 30 to 70% revenue share. We are now talking about one to 1.35% revenue share. And it still isn't working. How do we make this work so that we are, you know, functioning? I think, um, you know, the pool is a wonderful program. It's not, yes, it is in District Three. It is used by everyone in the city. So I very much, um, agree with, uh, Mayor Combs that it should be a, um, full council discussion. But I guess just wrapping up, yes, would love to make it work. I am not in favor at this point of providing any funding, given that we really don't know what the picture looks like, nor if we've been given a complete picture or a complete, anything that actually would really stop the bleeding. It just sort of covers scratches is what it looks like.
Quick question or not even a response, but just a question is, so that, what you just said perfectly phrased, that, that's what I was scratching at with the subcommittee idea is to try to do that in a discussion like this is, is feels incredibly difficult. So, so that's, I, so I don't know if that's a subcommittee or I don't know. It feels like it's a piece of concentrated work with the operator somewhat offline. And, and not that we wouldn't want the council to debate it and tear it apart and discuss it, but to do what, um, what the vice mayor just said, from the dais like we're sitting here, I can see why that's been a struggle for years and years because the format of cooperatively putting a partnership like that together that goes beyond the RFP, that's what I'm, what I'm wrestling with. So the way she said it's perfect to me, but I still feel like we're, we're, we're locked into this sort of path toward the iceberg that, um, and it's not about being in District Three. I only offered that up because more people are kind of coming to me saying, this is in your district. But I'm, I'm totally fine being at all of us together. It's just, this is a very imperfect way to, to get to what, um, the vice mayor just said. So that's, that's my, my struggle. And, and honestly, I understand the revenue share. I, I looked into that. I, I, I'm just a little worried that we can stick to our guns and then we end up a couple of months from now and we've got five times the amount of cost because the operator has to pull out. So I, I totally respect the fact that we have an agreement, but in most partnerships, you sort of, you look at what's happening and you go, wow, do we really want this thing to evaporate? And that's also what I'm trying to prevent is, is not sticking to our guns to the, is not sticking to the letter of the law as much and waiting for an imperfect solution. But trying to go beyond sort of an immediate triage. So it, yeah, anyway, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, I totally agree with it, but, um, I, I don't feel like we're really.
So to, you know, chime in a bit, like I, I know the, the city manager is, is looking for, for, for three. So I, I would be supportive of the direction that council member Schmidt has offered to, um, to direct the staff to, uh, provide some analysis on the proposals that have been put forward by, um, yeah, the, the pool operator. I, I, so, but again, I, I still don't think that the subcommittee is, is the best route. I, I, I don't think the issue as someone who's sat here for six years is as much the format as is like there is a fundamental like loss of trust between certain stakeholders, um, involved in this discussion. And I don't think that that changes, like, uh, by going to a, a sub, subcommittee format. You know, I would say to the vice mayor's point, I hear you. I don't think that this is solved by revving up non-resident rates as much as you can. And I do think like fundamentally it is, you know, based on certain projections, uh, that just didn't pan out. And so there's, and I'm going to butcher it, but there's that, that whole saying that like if, if I owe the bank a hundred dollars, like I have a problem. If I owe the bank a million dollars, the bank has a problem. We're the bank because the loss and the risks are so great to us. I, I think we can't, to council member Schmidt's point, like hold our guns and say, this is the deal. This is the deal with, that was struck. I think we have to appreciate and understand that there are, um, issues that have arisen that make the deal that was struck complicated for the operator to deliver on. And that the risk to us, um, is greater, uh, than any other stakeholder. Because we have the obligation to, to, I think, um, uphold residents' expectations as it relates to the pool. But again, that's something that, you know, um, you, you know, people can disagree on. And, and so, and I appreciate that. So, so I'll go to the vice mayor. If I'm counting city manager Murphy, you have two. We, we will see if there's a three and then I know we do have to go back to the, the corpus of the, the, the budget discussion. So the vice mayor and then, and then council member Wise and then, and then council member Taylor.
Well, I will just say that I am a no until I see something that states, um, this is how we would fill the gap. So there's something real to analyze that we aren't just doing one-offs and having staff run around, um, for something that's really not going to do, be a, um, solution from what I gather, even to the end of the year. So I'd like to see more of a solution. I don't know whether the, um, non-resident rates can be raised, um, to make that, um, to make this a viable option, but I haven't seen anything that it can't. And that's what I'm looking for. I'm thinking, um, just looking at the numbers, I think maybe $2, raising non-resident rates by a small amount may actually, um, make things work. It make it work. It certainly would make it better. I think this is why council member Taylor was trying to agendize this last time, um, just because there is so much to discuss. But I'm in agreement with the vice mayor. I think, um, yeah, yes, she said it much more succinctly than I will. So I'm in agreement with the vice mayor.
Council member Taylor, do you want to chime in here?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And my position is the same as it was when I tried to get this agendized. I don't support.
So that would be no, uh, city manager. We did not get to three. Okay. So now I appreciate, thank you, uh, council member Schmidt, because again, I know we have all heard a lot, um, from residents about, um, the situation regarding pool operations. And so, um, appreciate you, you bringing forward a, you know, a proposal, um, to, to sort of, um, you know, see how, how we might be able to address it. Okay. But returning to regular programming of the, the budget, are there any additional comments, questions, observations, motions as it relates to, to the, the proposed fiscal year budget, budget 25, 26? Uh, council member Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'll make the motion to approve item G2.
We have a motion and, and that will, and we're okay, right? That, that will incorporate all the resolutions like staff and city. Okay. And so we have a, we have a motion on the table to approve.
I will second.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Taylor and a second by vice mayor Nash to adopt a resolution adopting fiscal year 2025, 26 budget and capital improvement plan, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriations limit, adopt a resolution amending the salary schedule effective July 13th, 2025, adopt a resolution extending the solid waste and water rate assistance programs through June 2026, and accept award memo for authority and bid requirements through June 2026. Any further city council questions or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city council member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice mayor Nash?
Yes.
City council member Schmidt?
Yes.
City council member Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Corcoran. Now we'll move on to the final regular business item, uh, consider and adopt a res, this is G1, consider and adopt a resolution to amend fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Here to introduce the item is administrative services director Brittany Mello. Ms. Mello, hi.
Thank you and good evening. So we are here to present potential amendments to the fiscal year 24, 25 budget. Our agenda includes reviewing some background, reviewing the strategic pension funding reserve, including contribution options for this fiscal year and prior year catch-up adjustments, and looking at the use of the projected year-end surplus and the revised fiscal year 25, 26 budget deficit. And then to receive city council direction. So for background, at the June 10th public hearing, staff presented a projected general fund surplus of approximately $3 million for fiscal year 24, 25. The city council provided direction at that time to make a one-time transfer of $3 million from the general fund to the general CIP fund to support future funding needs for capital projects. Staff is presenting additional information on the strategic pension funding reserve and the proposed budget for consideration before finalizing this transfer. In 2011, city council established a fund balance policy for the general fund. At that time, two reserve buckets were established, including the emergency contingency reserve, which is used for items such as natural disasters, catastrophic accidents and other declared emergencies, as well as the economic stabilization reserve, which is used to stabilize city services during periods of severe operational budget deficits and to mitigate the effects of major economic uncertainties. In 2014, city council updated this policy to establish the, the strategic pension funding reserve, which is used for, or to mitigate the impact of a significant increase, um, in what is owed to CalPERS due to poor investment returns or changes to actuarial assumptions. It's also used to make additional payments to reduce the unfunded accrued liability or UAL that is owed to CalPERS. And this is how the city council has used this reserve, um, in the past. The policy states that 25% of the general fund's final operating surplus, if there is one, will be added annually to this reserve upon completion of the annual comprehensive financial report or ACFOR. At the time the pension reserve was established, the 25% of the final operating surpluses work contributed to the reserve from 2013, 14 through 2018, 19. There were no surpluses between fiscal years 2019, 20 and 21, 22. The contributions of the surplus in fiscal year 22, 23 and 23, 24 were not made. Separately, the additional 0.96 million UAL payment that was budgeted in the fiscal year 23, 24 was not made prior to the year end and would require reauthorization by city council to proceed. So there's some contribution options for this fiscal year for this pension reserve. So city council may proceed with the full $3 million transfer to the general CIP fund. This would be considered a mid-year budget amendment like any other and would be excluded from that final operating surplus calculation when preparing the ACFOR. Alternatively, city council may choose to hold back 25% of that projected year-end surplus as a placeholder to contribute to the reserve during ACFOR preparation. And this amount is approximately 0.75 million. In terms of some prior year catch-up adjustments, um, staff is recommending to reallocate 0.77 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the pension reserve, which is the amount of the final operating surpluses from those two fiscal years that were not contributed to the reserve. Additionally, staff's recommending to authorize use of the 0.96 million from the reserve balance to make that additional UAL payment for the fiscal year 23, 24 that was missed. Additional payments, um, would help to reduce the total UAL owed to CalPERS and save on future interest payments. So now we'll present multiple options for use of the projected year-end surplus. So after incorporating changes following the public hearing held on June 10th and anticipating this change to the VLF shortfall for fiscal year 23, 24 that Mr. Hanson described earlier, the fiscal year 25, 26 proposed budget deficit would increase from 0.8 million to point, or to 1.75 million. The city council may consider reducing the amount of the CIP transfer to make sure that those funds are available in the unassigned fund balance to close that deficit and balance the proposed budget. Of note, there is an approximate $9 million, uh, unassigned fund balance currently, which does exclude this projected surplus. So now we'll walk the council through a few options for consideration. This table has been updated since the staff report was published as the high voltage streetlight conversion project was pulled from the consent calendar. So the full $3 million surplus is shown. So option one would be to continue with that one-time transfer. So option one would be to continue with that one-time transfer from the general fund to the general CIP fund for the full $3 million amount. Option two would set aside that 25% placeholder of approximately .75 million with the rest being transferred to the CIP. Option three would be to close that projected deficit of the .8 million to put that placeholder for the strategic funding pension funding reserve and then have the remaining balance transferred. Option four would be to close the projected deficit and transfer the remaining balance to the CIP. And then there's this new option five to cover the reduction in the VLF reimbursement by the state of .96 million and have the remaining balance transferred to the CIP. So given the new information on the VLF shortfall that staff learned earlier today, staff is recommending the new option five. And so now staff is seeking city council direction on our three staff recommendations, which to recap is to reallocate .77 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance to that pension reserve, to authorize use of that .96 million for the additional UAL payment, and to cover the reduction in VLF reimbursement by the state and transfer the remaining balance to the general CIP fund. And that does conclude my report and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mello. A question, does the state do like any sort of mid-year budget amendments? Is there a possibility we could get the full VLF or is that not, not realistic thinking?
Yes, no, I don't know, is the answer. It depends on what they decide to do. They can, they can change or amend the budget at any time. If our county council is successful in advocating for us and getting an amendment to the budget, then we may receive the full amount at a later time. But right now, it's unknown what, what the status is. Based on the information just received today, it has reduced that .96 million.
And if I recall, like San Mateo County and only a few other counties across the state, right, are in this very unique position. So it's not like we have a strong lobby.
Yeah, three counties across the state, San Mateo, Alpine, and Mono.
Yeah. Okay, any clarifying questions for, for staff? Okay, let's call for a public comment. Sorry, sorry, Councilmember Schmidt.
Just, just a simple one. The, the unassigned fund balance of $9 million. So how would that work with option five? Would that be another way we would pull from the $9 million to cover the VLF? Or is it, is it essentially the same thing as option five? I'm just a little confused.
So all of the options would be drawing down that $3 million projected year-end surplus? None of them would be touching the current $9 million unassigned fund balance?
Okay.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
And if I recall correctly, you said that if we were to go with, for example, option one or anything that's, I guess the question is, anything that is transferred from that surplus to the CIP fund is not available for, that's not considered operating surplus then for the 25%?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I think we can call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide a comment on regular business item G1 related to the 202425 budget, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card, return that to me here at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engage that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Heron. Bringing it back to council for comments, thoughts? Yeah, Councilmember Wise?
Hello. So regarding the strategic pension funding reserve, so what happens if we don't have that placeholder? I mean, will we just owe that amount later, at a later time?
So we have our normal payments that the employer is required to make every year. So those, those have to happen. And then we have the additional UAL payments. Those are completely discretionary. So the city council previously adopted that policy to help have that, those reserve funds available to help make those additional payments or to be used under other special circumstances. But the city council does not have to have funds in that reserve to make those additional UAL payments. Staff can present that within the proposed budget and council can draw down that general fund for that purpose.
Okay, thank you for the reminder.
So sort of following on Councilmember Wise's question, if according to the policy at this point, when the AFGR is wrapped up, then 25% would be allocated to that and sit in the fund. Is there anything in the policy that says that we make the additional payments? Or, and how does, how is that amount landed upon?
Yes, so the policy includes that 25% operating surplus during the ACFER that that would be automatically transferred to the reserve. So that would happen at the end of this fiscal year, separate whatever happens tonight for the projected year-end surplus at this point. The funds may be used for the additional UAL payments, but those are discretionary. So the reserve would not be replenished other than that operating surplus that would be added. So if there was a surplus added, when we look at the amortization schedules and what UAL payment would be required for a given fiscal year, it would draw down whatever that reserve balance is, plus whatever is needed from the general fund to make that additional payment to be in alignment with that 15-year amortization schedule, which is a budget principle from the city council.
So I had a quick one as well. I, the, the .7s started to throw me off and they all started to blur together. So I, part of this is just maybe helping clarify. So I looked at the .77 as a correction, meaning we, if we think about this as, say it's a loan, we missed a couple of payments. Is that a, is that a correct way to think about it?
I think that's a fair characterization. That .77 million should have been contributed to the reserve during those fiscal years.
So following questions, that is, that wasn't, that's, I don't see that in option five. So what, what are the repercussions of missing a couple of payments like that? Because I know if you miss a couple of loan payments, you're in trouble, but it doesn't sound like it's the same thing here. So I'm just curious what the repercussions of that are and our makeup payments related to that.
Yes, so the options for consideration for that projected year-end surplus are separate from the direction needed for those catch-up adjustments for the pension reserve.
Okay.
So those would draw down the general fund unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
It would not impact the surplus.
Okay, got it. Yeah, because we're still at a surplus. I think somebody said we don't have a surplus. We technically still do. We just have a deficit moving into the next year. Okay, that, that helps. And then the second thing is, I'm, I'm really inclined to lean toward slowing down our amortization schedule. If finances were great, paying off a loan early is fantastic. But when it's a little tighter, kind of spacing that out is sometimes preferable. What I got confused on last time a little bit was how, you've said it's discretionary. So if we do have that $1 million that we don't kind of pay early, do we need to make some kind of a policy adjustment or do we need to make some kind of a, or is that just we decide we're going to slow down the amortization? I was a little unclear on the technical aspects of how we would do that.
So if the city council wanted to adjust its position on the amortization schedule, we would bring the budget principles, a revision to those budget principles as the 15-year amortization schedule is outlined for pension liabilities. The reserve policy would not need to be amended as it doesn't specify an amortization schedule. It just provides the additional UAL payments as an option to use the reserve.
Got, got it. Okay, thanks.
So is there, the staff has laid out five options. Is there some sense of, Vice Mayor?
So before we get to the five options, I, just considering the piece about the UAL, I would certainly, I would be in charge of, in charge, I would be in support of reallocating the $766,570 from the unassigned general fund to the strategic pension funding to, for the lack of funding for two years, which should have been allocated per the council procedure. And I would also be supportive of authorizing the additional payment that was not made, that was part of the budget, but that was not made. So I'd be in support of those two pieces before we start looking at the surplus.
And so, and those two pieces total $750,000 or something else?
So it's reallocating, actually, I should list.
Yes, so those would, the .77 million would be added to the reserve balance and then .96 million would be drawn down from that balance to make the payment.
And that's outlined in Table 3 in the staff report. That shows the beginning reserve balance, the current year's UA, additional UAL payment, and then what it would be ending this, this year without adding any of the surplus to it. And then the two adjustments that are listed there show the addition of that 25% from 23 and 24 that were missed, as well as the subtraction of that additional UAL payment that we're proposing to make as well. So that would then end the pension reserve at about $950,000.
And so what would the overall subtraction from the surplus would that represent?
Supporting those options would not reduce the surplus.
All right. And so, okay. Then that's, the, yeah, are there?
I'm sorry, I, I just want to make sure I heard it right because the number, the inflows and outflows is, I really just want to make sure I have it clear. So the .77 is our, the payments that we missed is the Vice Mayor said. So that's, that's that. Is that in addition to the .96? So is the total amount outflowing .96 or is it 1. whatever that is, 1.63? What I'm trying to get my hands around is like, what's the total number in aggregate coming in and what's the total number going out?
So I'm having Mr. Hanson do some quick math, but the .77 is flowing in from the general fund unassigned fund balance and the .96 is flowing out. So that would have net impact of just those two actions. I'll just do this really quickly. Of .19 more flowing out.
And a, and a portion of that is early payment and a portion of that is makeup payments, right? No?
The .77 is what would be owed to the reserve per council for that general fund, fund balance policy.
Right.
The .96 is the payment to CalPERS.
Got it. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, is there any additional comment or questions?
Could you please go through it one more time exactly? So the money, the .77 would be taken out of this current unassigned reserve funds?
Yes.
So that's the $9 million that then would be reduced by .77?
That is correct.
And then that would go in, that .77, I guess I'll walk through this and see if I have it right. The .77 would then go into the strategic reserve fund?
Yes.
And that strategic reserve fund, which I don't have the number in front of me, but that would then be reduced by .96 or something like that?
Yes.
And so, and all of that is without touching the budget surplus, which we can then decide next?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to build on what the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor said, we can, we can do two things separately. We can replenish the .77 into the reserve to make up and make sure it stays healthy. But we can also decide not to do the outflow to pay CalPERS early for the UAL. Because that nine, the 96 is an outflow, the 77 is just making sure we have enough for our pension, for our staff. Because we missed, we kind of missed a couple of payments to keep that reserve healthy. So we can, we can do one and not the other. It's not a, we have to do both.
That is correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
But it is something that was in our budget last year that we did not follow through on.
The, which part? The paying into our reserve or the paying out to?
Yes, the paying. Yes, the paying, the .96 was something that we had budgeted last year. But we did not pull the money out. So this would actually be following through again on what the council had previously decided.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just leaning toward, I would rather keep the money in our bank versus give it to CalPERS because it's an early payment on a, it's not a loan, but I, I'd love, it's a debt, right? It's something that we owe. So I'm, I'm leaning toward all four, kind of keeping the money here so we could potentially use it for multiple reasons that we can debate in the future.
So if I'm walking through like the direction that is sought, on the reallocation of the .77 million, you're, you're supportive?
Because that's just us paying ourselves, right?
And is the council supportive of, of, of other?
Yeah, I know, I'm going to walk, I'm going to, just, I think that's the one thing where, so that's why I was starting there, where there seems to be a clear consensus. Okay. Now then, moving to the second direction saw the authorization of, I'm just going to say the $1 million from the strategic pension funding reserve for an additional UAL payment. This is what you were talking about, why paying CalPERS early. So I'm, I'll let you say it, but you have some concerns or opposition to that.
Well, we're, we're still going to pay CalPERS, right? So it's, the bill's going to come due, but we're, we're paying them at less than this .96, right? So if I understand it, it's not like we're not paying our, we're not, we're not paying the UAL. We're just not paying it in advance on an accelerated timeline. We're just slowing the timeline down a little bit. Is that correct? We'd still pay the UAL now this year.
We will absolutely have to pay CalPERS the full UAL at some point in time if we make, so this would not have the additional payment. So that would just have that balance growing and accruing interest. So we would, we wouldn't have those savings, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and so then that means you are supportive or not supportive?
I, I would rather keep that money, I don't want to pay off the Uh, I would rather keep that money, I don't want to pay off this sort of quote unquote debt, debt early if we're in the struck, uh, in the budget situation we're in. When, when times are good, I'm happy to pay off our debts early. But when times are tighter, I'd rather keep the money at home.
Yeah, City Manager Murphy?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I do just wanna, if, if there's discussions about the, I want to be careful of my, my words here, additional UAL payments. Again, I'll point to Table three in the staff report that Mr. Hanson pointed to. There's two of those in there. One related to fiscal year 24, 25, one related to fiscal year 23, 24. So I believe if there's any real discussions about additional UAL payments, I think it'd be also important to understand which fiscal year is being discussed because there are two different dollar amounts for those respective fiscal years. So I don't, I, I raise this just so that, um, we, we're keeping track of the, those two payments.
But there, if the .96 is authorized, both are covered in there? Or no?
Let's see, there, there's a need to, and I'll maybe turn back to others to kind of step, maybe step through those two additional payments. One, the, the fiscal year 24, 25 has been authorized and is about to be paid. The fiscal year 23, 24 needs to be reauthorized. But again, would need to be paid within the next couple of days. Yeah, both of these payments need to occur, should be occurring by the close of this fiscal year. But we're awaiting council direction to, to wire those funds.
So, um, Councilmember Schmidt, um, is, we're all aligned on one, but Councilmember Schmidt?
That, yeah, so thanks. I, so that sounded like a back payment. I'm looking at, we're talking about Table three in the deck. So I, I thought this was a larger payment on a consistent payment we made, but the way the same manager just said it, it sounds like we've got some kind of outstanding debts that we need to pay. Or am I thinking of that the wrong way?
I can probably clarify that for you. Each year, it, it basically is this, if we had to pay a thousand dollars every year, we pay a thousand dollars every year and we do that as our normal process. That's just a normal thing we do. We have an extra $500 that we set aside and said, hey, we're gonna use this for this debt. In fiscal year 23, 24, we said, oh, we have this $500 that we can use, but we didn't do anything with it. We just left it there. Even though you said, hey, we think we're gonna make that, we want to make that payment and we're planning to make that extra $500 payment. We just, we just, that payment didn't happen during that timeframe. The additional one for the 24, 25, the current year that we're in right now, that one is being made. We said, okay, we set aside that $500, so we're gonna send that $500 off and we have sent that $500 off at this point. So now we're just saying, hey, we forgot this additional 500 that we have. Do we want to send that off now or what do we want to do with it? But that's really all we're asking.
Yeah, okay, so we're still meeting the baseline $1,000 payment that we have to make. But we're just, we, we're, when times are good, we're not, we're not getting ahead of the schedule. So that's, I think I feel, okay, so we're, we're not missing a payment. We're just, we're just deciding not to use our extra money to pay off CalPERS.
Correct.
Okay.
But that additional, just, is that additional 500,000, or excuse me, 500, is that the 960,000?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Yes, that's the 960.
If you had said no, I was gonna be really, really.
Me too. There's too many 96s and 77s in here, so just.
Yeah, okay, Councilmember Wise?
But I just want to clarify on the, the 23, 24, 962,000. If we don't pay that now, we will have to pay it later with interest. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I think we should pay that.
But it's, it's always an extra payment. And so like, I mean, in theory, like, they're not due or owe that money. Again, not, it not being paid means that like, that's additional debt that we're accruing. But, but is, it's, it's like extra, right? Or no?
I just want to pay the lesser amount, which would be this without the interest. Is that?
Yeah, basically what it is, is that, that, that 960 takes us from a, an amortization schedule that is a, a 20-year timeframe and says, oh, we're gonna change that and we're gonna pay that off in 15 years instead. And that difference is that 960. So we're saying, hey, if we send a 960, we'll pay this off five years earlier. Now, this is a rolling schedule because, you know, new people come in and retire. CalPERS has different rates of return. When they have a really good year, our UAL goes down. When they have a really bad year, that goes up. So that number is always a fluctuating, rolling schedule. But we look at that, that 15 year and say, no, we want to pay that, or that, yeah, the 15 years, sorry, the 20 year and say, no, we want to pay that in, in, in the 15 year instead. So that's what we're planning to do is pay the 15 year, even though we don't have to. We can, we can still pay the 20 year because that's what the baseline is required.
And, and I think just to clarify, I, I'd just rather keep that, but because times are tight, I'd rather keep that million dollars here for us to do with some future decision as opposed to, it's almost like paying your credit card, card off a little early so you don't accrue interest. Like when funds are great, then, you know, you pay it off. But when your budget's a little tight, you're kind of happy to have that, that float for a while. So that's, that's how I'm.
Could we do other stuff with that? Or does that 960, that million, whether it's today or tomorrow or 100, you know, 10 years from now, that always has to go to a UAL payment?
That 960 will eventually go to a UAL payment, but it may not be that full amount. And it just depends on what that rolling schedule is. So if council chooses not to make that 960 payment and they've, and you've chosen to also contribute the seven in, into there, that is in the strategic pension reserve. So we just basically put it in a, in a savings account and said, okay, we're gonna say this is aside, but we're not gonna send that money off. We're just gonna hold it here for us.
But you can only, because I, I mean, my only thing what I understand where Councilmember Schmidt is coming from, but it's just like, I feel like we don't have all the optionality with that 960 anyway. It's, 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 it's in a fund specifically targeted to pay off something. And so it's like, so it's not like at some point we can go and decide, oh, we want to like.
So that's a key clarification. So it has to stay there or do we have the ability to use that money in other ways?
That would have to be according to whatever the city council policy says that it can be used on. And if council chooses to amend that policy and pull money out of that for other uses, council is able to do that because this is council setting that money aside and committing that money for this particular purpose. Council can always change its mind and, and, and go a different direction if it, you know, if we amend the policy.
So it would just be an additional hoop, but in theory, there isn't real restrictions on this, this money. Okay, so where, so Councilmember Schmidt is, is not in favor of the authorization in connection with the, the 960,000? Vice Mayor Nash, Councilmember Wise, Councilmember Taylor, where, where are you at on, on the authorization?
I am in favor of paying it off and avoiding additional interest.
I agree, just because I completely understand time value of money and we'd like to use the money for other things right now. But I guess my concern is with federal government being in flux and all other things. I'm worried, and also just looking at our other numbers. I'm worried in a couple of years, these will be the good old days and we wish we had that money and had paid it off. So that, that's where I'm at.
Or you wish you had the money, so, but I, you could go.
But, but just to clarify, it never gets paid off, right? So that's why I, I, this is why the credit card thing is a bad analogy is like, it's always gonna be there as a payment, right?
Well, when the workers are replaced by AI, then you, you, no. But yes, in theory, as long as you have workers, like, right? You, you will, you will have that, that obligation to pay. So I, I think I'm leaning towards authorizing the payment also. I can, I can go both ways, but something just feels more comfortable about paying off debt, even if it's never really paid off versus, versus keeping it around. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'm in support of making the payment for both one and two for the staff recommendation.
Great, um, okay, so then moving on to the, the options. Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash, because I was like, let's just go to the options. And the Vice Mayor reminded me that we, we had some other things to, to provide direction on. So where is the, the council at on the, these options as it relates to the VLF? Paying off the, or closing out the projected shortfall for 25, 26 and funds to CIP? It seems like there are, there are lots of options. The staff recommendation is, is covering the VLF shortfall and, and the rest, the remainder of the, the 24, 25 surplus going to, to the CIP fund? Yeah?
Question, why did you recommend the, to pay off the VLF or to cover the reduction in VLF but not to cover the other portion, the .79 deficit that we were looking at before?
The VLF reimbursement, those are property taxes that go into our general fund, which the city council has the most discretion on how to use those funds. We thought that would be a better approach than putting some of this money into the, the reserve, which we just talked about is, is committed and can only be used for, for certain amounts. In terms of the projected deficit, we, just as last year, we, we have that deficit and we close that by using the unassigned fund balance. So we do feel that there, there's enough in the unassigned fund balance to close that deficit and that the, the VLF reimbursement was the more impactful of the, the two options.
And I would just add to that as well, that one of the other reasons we're looking at the VLF is because of the volatility of it, because it is a very influx number and because that, because of all the changes that have happened with that reimbursement, that, that remains quite in flux. So we want to make sure that we cover what we know or what we project is going to be that, that shortfall that we're not going to get so that we, we, we set that aside and make say we're, we're good with that. And then if we get it, great, we get it, you know, and then we can come back and talk with, you know, provide council other options at that point.
I'll, this, this feels like, I'm glad you said that about the 9 million used to cover the .79 or 7, whichever one it is that, that made sense. I, I'm inclined to go for option five just because it's, it seems quite straightforward and simple. I will ironically point out that that .696 million dollars we just gave to CalPERS, we could have used to do that and put the $3 million. We could have easily closed that cap that way, but anyway. So yeah, it, it, it'll just give us $2 million in surplus to, to use in CIP, which it's unfortunate, but I, I feel like that's the cleanest option, so.
I'm also supportive of option five. Councilmember Wise, Councilmember Taylor, Vice Mayor Nash?
I'm, I'm also happy to support option five. I'm glad to hear that the projected fiscal year def, for 2025, 2026 deficit can also be covered, so that, that's fine with me. It seems like they'll both, yeah, seems like a clean way to do it.
Councilmember Taylor?
I ordered the staff recommendation of option five.
But even like when the last meeting, as it related to the RFP, like I was clearly not on the winning side, but you was like, we still want to hear from you.
So I actually would have put more into, I would have included, I, I would be in favor of closing the projected fiscal deficit as well. I am concerned about that and it's sort of a toss-up to me between that and the strategic pension funding reserve. I was actually on option three before we had this discussion tonight with closing the deficit, doing a 25% placeholder for the strategic pension funding reserve and putting the remaining funding balance into the CIP.
And not addressing the VLF?
And it would, the VLF was not, I was not, I was not aware of it until today. And so I would actually, I would tend to add the VLF, I would tend to do all of that and then put the remaining amount into the CIP rather than, so I would have the .79 plus the .96 of the deficit in the VLF. Plus I would also do the 25% placeholder, which I think would probably be reduced more given that, given that. So it wouldn't even, it would not be the .55 million. And then I would put any of the remaining into the CIP. Just, I am concerned, as Councilmember Wise said, that we may be at some, looking at these as the, the rosy days. And I do want to make sure we have enough reserves for future councils.
So to staff, like, how should, because I don't know that there is alignment, there's a majority across all of the recommendations, but it's not the same majority and it's not a consistent majority. So how, Councilmember Wise?
May I ask in option four, where we close the deficit and then transfer the remaining balance to the CIP fund, what, like what happens with the VLF funds in that scenario?
We would come to the city council at the mid-year budget amendment once we know, you know, for sure what exactly the amount is being reduced for VLF. And it presents some options at, at that point in time. More than likely, if, you know, if we have that deficit at that time, maybe some other revenues are coming in higher and will help kind of close that revenue gap. Maybe expenses are coming in a little lower, but if that, if nothing, if everything stays the same, then the option more than likely would be to draw down the unassigned fund balance to close the budget deficit at that time.
Okay, so, but, so it seems like we sort of would end up in the same place because with option four, we would use the unassigned fund balance for the VLF. And then in option five, we would use the unassigned fund balance for the deficit, so.
We, we may very well end up in that same place. We'll just have more information, you know, the latest information a little bit further down the road on that.
Okay, so like back to like how is best to structure this? I guess you just do one motion over all of the direction, but then, like where we landed on three, Councilmember, oh, the Vice Mayor is not supportive of, and then where we landed on two, Councilmember Schmidt is not supportive of, and so, ah. Okay. Would, where are you, do you, Councilmember Schmidt, feel that it's important that you are able to actually register a vote against the authorization of the 960,000? Are, are you comfortable having made that point during discussion and would be supportive of?
I mean, I'd lose that vote, right? So it, I, I'm, I, I don't break things up to be disagreeable, right? It's more about making sure we're being fiscally conservative. I, I will, yeah, no, so I'm.
No, and I, I wouldn't see it as being disagreeable, but I just want to give you the option of being able to not have to vote in favor of something, to be able to vote for the things that you are in favor of, but not have to vote in, in, in favor of the things that you are not in favor of.
If we did want to vote, I could make one more persuasive argument. That, that 9.6 with the VLF, if we didn't pay CalPERS early, we could use it to pay down the VLF. So that's the exact amount. So if, if we did want to take a vote and people were willing to change their mind, like that's a, that's a pure equivalency. That's why I wanted to kind of keep the money at, at home instead of prepaying CalPERS, so. But if everybody's still where they were, then it doesn't, doesn't make much of a difference.
I think we're likely gonna be still where we are. But just a, a question on, on that, like, since this 9.6 is, is in the strategic pension funding reserve, like the motion would be have to, to move that to the general fund? like the motion would be have to, to move that to the general fund and then be made available to pay the VLF? Or could you just say like, oh, pay the VLF from the strategic pension funding reserve?
So that 0.96 million as of right now would be remaining in the pension funding reserve. So that's been committed previously to, for that purpose. So not making the additional UAL payment would not mean that those funds are now available. Council would have to, you know, adopt a resolution on committing those funds from the reserve to.
But we could, right?
Yes, of course.
But, but by giving it to Calpers, we can't, right? So that's, anyway, so that's, that will be the only reason I would want to do a vote is if, if we said, hey, we don't have to draw down our reserves at all. We can use this money to pay, pay for our shortfall, but anyway.
I think once, once Calpers cashes your check, you're, you're, you're not seeing that money again. So, but okay, I'm happy to make a motion with regards to the direction recommended by staff on all three items. The reallocation of the 0.77 million to the general fund unassigned fund balance, the authorization of the 0.96 million from the strategic pension funding reserve to an additional UAL payment. And then, and then option, the distribution of the surplus for 2425, as provided in option five, which is covering the VLF shortfall and the remainder of a little over $2 million to the general, to the CIP. So that's a motion. Is, is there a second?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you. And I'd like to just get clarification from either city attorney. Can we do one motion, including the adoption of the resolution and then adding the direction that we just received from Mayor Combs? Or do they have to be two separate motions?
Yeah, one motion is fine.
Perfect, thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by Mayor Combs and a second by city council member Wise to adopt a resolution approving additional appropriations and amendments to the fiscal year 2025, or 2024, 25, adopted operating and capital budget with the following directions, to reallocate 0.77 million from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the strategic pension funding reserve, authorize the use of 0.96 million from the strategic pension funding reserve for an additional UAL payment, and to cover the reduction of the VLF reimbursement by the state and transfer the remaining balance of 2.04 million from the general fund to the general CIP fund. Any further city council questions or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nash?
Yes.
City council member Schmidt?
No.
City council member Wise?
Yes.
Mayor Combs? And the motion passes with city council membership, Schmidt descending.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Court Karen, can you call for a public comment on the informational items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, H1, city council meeting agenda topics, or H2, update on the home upgrade services progress report. If you are in person, please complete a speaker card, return that to me here at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, H1 and H2. And seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, City Court Karen. With that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to highlight upcoming event for July 4th celebration held on, on the 4th of July here at the Burgess campus with activities from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM and including a parade and performances from Circus Bella. And there are opportunities to register in advance to be able to help in preparing for the event. So that's Friday, July 4th, here at the Burgess campus with the parade starting at the 800 Alma Street near the, between, in the parking lot, between the library and the gymnasium. And that's, that's my update for this evening.
All right, thank you, city manager Murphy. Yes, I encourage everyone to, to come to the July 4th festivities. Now to council member reports, Vice Mayor Nash. Senator and council, do you not have?
So I did attach a note, just I was, as part of the BASCA, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, I attended a two-day tour of the Hetch Hetchy water system. And it was fascinating to see all the different ways the SFPUC managed their water. And on one hand, it is very predictive. We do not have a lot of wiggle room as far as what we can do as one of the agencies in BASCA. But it was really very, very impressive as to how they handle the water from the O'Shaughnessy DM all the way to Crystal Springs, including miles and miles of underground tunnels that are over 100 years old. Thank you.
Yeah, I will just provide a report that last week I participated in a panel discussion at the annual, biannual ABAC meeting. And it was specifically, my part of the discussion or the panel was sharing information about our use of the Bayren decarbonization showcase program, which is a, a program that offers assistance as it relates to electrification, other sort of infrastructure changes to, that have a positive impact on the environment. We have specifically used the program in connection with the renovation of the Bellhaven Child Development Center as, as it relates to upgrading the HVAC system, the cooking, cooking appliances. And so, yeah, provided some, some information on that. And thank you to Rachel Lutner, Lunder, and the Sustainability Office for her, her assistance in prepping on that and also for all of her, her substantive work as it relates to that program. Councilmember Schmidt?
I, I had a quick one as well. I, I actually just want to thank the mayor for hosting Assemblymember Berman at Cafe Zoe recently. Wasn't quite sure what to expect, but there were about 40 people there and a ton of interest. Even after you had to duck out, there were a lot of local questions. There were a lot of questions about what, what was going on in the state. So just wanted to publicly acknowledge those are really good to attend for residents to get a sense of what's going on at the, the state level. And, and obviously, Assemblymember Berman lives here in the city. So there's a, there's a real personal connection as well. But just, it was a great event and appreciative to be able to be at that.
Yeah, I will agree it was a really great event and a great turnout. And, and I will just make one correction that I did not host and only because lots of residents have come up to me saying that I hosted. And that was Assemblymember Berman's event and his staff did all of the work. And so I don't want them to think that I have taken any, any credit for, for that. But I think you're, you're right. And I had to leave early for the ABAC meeting. I, I think it was a really, really great turnout with lots of questions across both state issues and, and, and local issues. I will provide one additional update if, if there is. This week on, on Thursday, the SFC JPA, the San Francisco, San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority, another, additional agenda item will be, will, will be on the topic of Reach 2. It, it has, it was a key agenda item for, for the last meeting, at which point we got some, I don't know what to call them, some project options as it relates to Reach 2 and how to, to best mitigate flooding as it relates to, to, to the creek. I think we're at, getting to what some might call a, a critical juncture of like, what is the right, you know, selection of tools? That would be best to, you know, address, address the flooding risks that are present both in Menlo Park and East Palato and Palato. So for, for those, I know this has been a, a, an ongoing issue of a number of years, decades in the community. But for, for those who, that, for those whom this is an important topic and who may not have been paying attention recently, I do think we are, we're getting to a more critical juncture. And so I'd encourage you to pay attention and, and like let your voice be heard on, on those, that issue. With that, if there are no other council member reports, then I will adjourn.